Jump to page four. In that deck that the folks have in front of them. So this is, remember, just a reminder, our governance calendar. So every time we convene, right, we talk about the markets, we talk about performance, we talk about the managers a little bit. We also attend to other items throughout the course of the calendar year, just from a governance standpoint and oversight standpoint, to just make sure we're attending to the other things that we think are important for you folks as trustees to be mindful of along the way. This quarter so happens to be this Q1 reporting we're focused on tonight, so happens to be the investment policy statement review. Remember, we've got policy statements for both the town and the Guardian's plans, and it's an important document, and it's one that at least once a year we want to review. So tonight, we'll kind of walk you through our high-level thoughts there and where we stand with it. And if you would, Heather, turn to page eight is probably the best place to start for folks. You'll see here just quickly a visual, and it does point you to your policy statements are in great working order. No significant changes recommended. We're going to make some small edits and suggestions to you just based on a potential portfolio action in the two programs. But you've got good statements, they've got all the important elements from an oversight perspective and an element perspective, as you see listed there, that constitutes a good document for you, and the policy statements are in very good order. I say that with a recognition that we have one small change we want to make to the investment programs that'll have effects for the portion of the investment policy statement. So bear with me here, if you would, and I'll bring it full circle. If you could jump, Heather, all the way to page 25. What we've done in those interim pages, as you can see in the booklet, you have copies of the two pension, the two IPSs, the investment policy statements. We are recommending, you see here, a simple change in the investment programs for both plans. And you'll see there, we're asking for you to eliminate the Brandywine Global Bond Strategy. Working with our analysts and research teams, we just think that capital's better deployed elsewhere within the fixed income markets. So you can see there, we're recommending eliminating it all together, repurposing that capital within fixed income, and then making just some very small changes along the way there in the proposed target allocations. I would turn your attention to the existing target allocation column you see there in that exhibit, and right next door on the right, you'll see the proposed target allocations. Very, very similar. So certainly not wholesale changes, but just a little bit in the way of capital repositioning based on our expectations for markets on a go-forward basis. So if you're comfortable with this change, we would want to reflect that as well in the investment policy statement. So bear with me here again, if you would, for just a moment. And if you could, Heather, turn back to page 24. And I know there looks like it would be an awful lot of change there, but you can see what we're doing in your grid within the policy statement is reflecting the changes proposed on 25 back into the statements themselves on page 24 in the way of the allocation table changes. So in terms of this evening's potential action item, that's the only thing, Mayor, we had recommended for the group. That slight change on page 25, the derivative effects to the policy statements can be done in one fell swoop. Maybe not, but they're related and got a recommendation, I guess, through to the joint boards.
Okay. All right. So let me call that motion first. I know, I know, he's stated. So let's move on to if that's it for the presentation. You want to, do you want to continue the presentation, and then I'll call the motions with your recommendation?
Whatever, Mayor. I can, we would do one up.
Please, let's speak that way. Yeah, let's do that way.
You want to do it that way?
Yeah.
Okay.
That would work.
All right, let's set that aside for a minute, and we'll kind of work back into that. So I am going to, with that, Heather, if you could turn to page in that same deck, page 31. So let's step back for just a minute. This is a busy exhibit, I know, but what it's intended to do is just show you what markets have done. This is again through March. I'll catch up on some more topical numbers in just a second. But you can see there, kind of an interesting dynamic. You see the fixed income markets, the third column in from the left there, where about a third of the assets for your two pension plans are invested, up about 3%, a little less than that in the first quarter. And then you can see there, more of a mixed bag within global equities, and I would turn your attention to those lighter gray shades right in the middle of the exhibit there. And interestingly enough, you can see the US equity markets actually in the first quarter traded down a little bit. You see both large and small cap equities with negative returns. Their counterparts overseas were actually positive. And interestingly enough, that same dynamic is in place, you know, by and large, year-to-date. So I'll just give you a couple of numbers through last night, just so you've got the context, because we'd want to catch up on that. Large cap equities in the US today are up about 3.2%. So they've recovered a good deal from the number you see there, minus four and a half. Small cap equities have come back a little bit in the US. They're down about 4% through last night. The international markets continue to go pretty strong. So year-to-date, the developed international markets are up almost 19% in the year. And the emerging market equities you see in that column right next door, up almost 13%. I draw that contrast for the boards, because it does speak to really the basic framework and the mantra that we've had in place for your programs, and that, you know, we've advocated for consistently, and that's diversification, right? Because it's just really hard to try to time these types of switches in markets. You'll remember through the end of 2024, it was the domestic markets that were doing very well. The big companies here in the US were doing particularly well, and that has switched pretty dramatically in the new year. So again, right, just to give you a little bit of sense and perspective around why the programs we have in place are diversified on a global scale. It's to make sure that you've got capital participating in those markets when they do rotate in the favor. So that's enough on capital market updates. I'll turn your attention, if no one objects, to page, I think it's 39. Heather, should be the, we'll start with the employee plan. Everyone can see that, okay? So you see there, $45.7 million, thereabouts, at the end of March, allocated pretty closely to the standing targets, if you look at the two middle columns of the exhibit. So no suggestions other than what we've just talked about previously in terms of wholesale changes. For those interested, markets I mentioned have done well in the spring. As of last night, that $45.7 million was $47.1 million. So there's been some more gains, and it looks like if the next week and a half or so holds out, we have the making of a pretty good fiscal year, ending in June. And we'll show you a couple of those numbers momentarily. Lineups, we talked about eliminating Brandywine, so again, just table that, if you would, for a moment. We had one elevation on a status. Conestoga, the small cap manager there in the program, has some retirements coming on their portfolio team, but well in handle, and our team's comfortable with it. So we elevated to discuss. It's not an action item that we think the board needs to consider. If you jump to the next page, so you've got it, Police and Fire, $81.7 million at the end of March. And again, you can see allocations that by and large match the standing targets, again, the two columns in the middle of the exhibit. And similar to the employee plan, $84.1 million invested total last night. So some more gains harvested over the last several weeks since the beginning of the second quarter. Finally, on the top of page 41, just so folks have it, you can see there, I kind of hinted at the makings, I think, of a decent fiscal year. So up about 5% through March. I'm in the upper left-hand corner of the exhibit, if folks can see that, for both plans, as you would expect, right, because they're invested essentially the same way. So close to 5%. And again, good numbers the last several weeks. So I think we'll be in pretty good shape when the fiscal year concludes. And as I'm not going to go through each and every number on the exhibit here, you know, some waxing and waning a little bit, I would finish with and conclude with the five-year column. Everyone see that number up in the middle of the exhibit there? And I do that, and you can see that the portfolios have annualized at about 9.5% or thereabouts. Think about the last five years, right? The onset of that, we had a global pandemic. We had the federal government and the Federal Reserve having to inject historic amounts of relief into the system. You remember all the relief programs, cutting interest rates to zero. We had inflation spike up, and the Federal Reserve had to move in the other direction with interest rates, right, raise them very dramatically. And then more recently, of course, we have, we have a new administration in Washington, and they have very different ideas about global trade and policy and tariffs and the like. A lot for the portfolios to navigate, right, over the last five years. And I think from our standpoint, right, the LIPMS test is 9.5% per year growth in the two programs, even given all those challenges and some of those headwinds and headlines that you've read about. You know, that, from our standpoint, is a, you know, kind of a satisfactory outcome for sure, given everything that's going on. And then when you frame it right versus your standing return targets, that Steve talked to you about, you know, 6.34%, you know, kind of a nice kind of comparative as well, right, in terms of what's going on, on the investment side of the ledger, again, given what's been a pretty volatile period, just globally and certainly in the markets. So that is a quick, hopefully quick enough for folks. I'm happy to obviously take questions, but I don't want to overwhelm you with stuff. A lot more data in the booklet, but I think in terms of the important stuff, that would be, Mayor, there were prepared remarks.
Questions? Please.
Just want to throw out a few questions there. The removal of the Brandywine Opportunities Fund, opportunities generally implies it's go-anywhere, do-anything type of fund, but you're allocating the 2% allocation to a fixed core income group. Are you having a change in your model that's risk adverse, just as a move to safety for this asset class?
Exactly, right. There was, there was a point in time, if you looked at the global interest rate cycle and where the different rates were relative to one another around the world, where Brandywine, like you mentioned, has a pretty broad footprint to go anywheres. And our research team in doing their work toward the end of last year, early this year, just felt like it's a riskier proposition where Brandywine invests. They do invest a lot overseas in certain markets that are more volatile than the US fixed income market. So the thought was to repatriate that capital, and we don't need to take that risk with that portion of the program.
Okay, okay. Any other concerns when you look over to portfolio or your model?
I think, I think, right, I think the allocations feel right. Remember, it's not in this booklet, but we did, we do test your program every year, right, in terms of the return potential for the allocation that we talk about. So remember, right, you're 65%, what we call return-seeking equities and the like, 35% fixed income by target. And if you remember, when we did that math with our inputs and our expectations for markets over the long haul, we think the program has the potential to return about 7.2, 7.3% a year, a little bit north of the 675 bogey you have actuarially, right? And that's by design. We put a little bit of measure of safety in there over and above that, you know, to accommodate volatility in the markets and whatnot. So I think the short answer to your question is no other concerns, you know, other than the Brandywine situation. I think the program's in good shape and poised to continue to generate competitive returns.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right. We appreciate the presentation. I'm going to move into the action items that are required by the Board of Trustees. And I'm sorry, Chris, your recommendation is for the elimination of Brandywine and reallocation of the fund, or rebalancing of the fund, correct?
Correct.
And both, both the Police and Fire and on the City side?
Correct, Mayor, yes.
All right. So let me call this motion first to the Board of Trustees for the Police and Fireman's Pension Fund. I will entertain a motion to approve the recommended changes, which is the elimination of Brandywine and a rebalancing of the portfolio as presented by Mr. Kachmer of Fiducient Advisors for the Police and Fireman's Pension Fund.
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Benedetto, seconded by Commissioner Cogswell. Any questions? Hearing none. I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And now to the Board of Trustees for the City's Employees Retirement Fund. This is your city council. And whatever city representatives are on the line. I'm looking for a motion to approve the recommended changes, which is the elimination of Brandywine and a rebalancing of the portfolio as presented by Fiducient Advisors for the City Employees Retirement Fund.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Iveyne. Thank you. Thank you. So motion made by Councilwoman Iveyne, seconded by Councilwoman Rouette. Are there any questions or comments before I call the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I guess, yeah, that's it. I think that's all that I need from fiduciant this evening.
Yeah, I didn't know, Mayor, I apologize. I don't have the agenda. Do you need a quick OPEB update? And I don't even know if the agenda allows for it.
Well, you know, and Steve Lemansky was just here and did a presentation. Yeah, do you want to, do you want to talk a little bit about OPEB? I don't see it on the agenda, but...
We don't have any action items, so it would strictly be informational if that suits your needs.
But in the interest of keeping everybody on the same page, as I said, Board of Finance just received the valuation and recommendations for the annual required contribution. So if you want to go right into it.
Sure. I don't know, Heather, if you want to bring that deck up or not. We have a similar one. And again, we won't bore you with all the detail. You've heard a lot of it. But if you, when you get that deck, if you turn to maybe page 13, and there might be a good one, and that just shows the dashboard. If everyone can make that out. And again, we won't go through each and every number, but in the upper left-hand corner of the page there, you can see just the return profile over various timeframes, right? The larger allocation for the program, the mix of assets at a high level are similar to the pension plans. As you all know, the makeup, given the size of the program, is confined to index funds for the time being. But you see there, returns, right, as you would expect, kind of similar to what you've seen in the markets, right? And again, I would point you to that five-year number, actually annualizing a little north of 10% for the OPEB trust over that five-year period. If you turn, Heather, to page 15, just so the boards can see it, right, you'll see the complexion of the assets at the end of March. So about $2.1 million thereabouts, you see, again, allocated pretty close to standing target. And for those thinking about it, we're up at about $2.3 million now. So there's been some more gain there, as you would expect, right, as we talked about with the pensions over the last several weeks. So I think the program's in good order. I think the allocation's the right one, right? We'll continue to harness markets, and over time, they go up more than they don't. And you're invested very cost-effectively and diversified, and we'll let that run up and size up over time. So I think you're in good shape on the asset side of the ledger.
Thank you. Questions or comments? It's always nice when we hear we're invested wisely. All right. If there's nothing else.
Thank you, folks.
No. To the board members, we have some action to take with regard to pensions and approvals. So thank you very much. We appreciate you. All right. So to the Board of Trustees for the City Employees Retirement Fund, this is Ask Me, Council 4, Local 2212, Public Works Employees. I will entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective December 7, 2024, for Ralph Bascarino, Welder for the City of Torrington, in Equipment Maintenance Department after 26 years of service.
Summa.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. And seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne. Are there questions or comments on the calculation?
Correction.
Was it Paul? Thank you.
Cavanero seconded.
Second. So for the record, that was seconded by Councilman Cavanero. And if there are questions, and again, I'm looking, I'm trying to keep track of who's on the screen representing the City Board of Trustees. Any questions? I'll call it again. Hearing none. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving into item six, again, staying with the City Employees Retirement Fund. I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective December 22, 2024, for Dennis Klenoski, Stock Clerk for the City of Torrington, Equipment Maintenance Division, after 40 years of service.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne. And are there any questions or comments on the computation? Hearing none. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective August 10. Oh, my goodness. Is it, is that a typo? 2032? No, thank you, Olivia. Yeah. So let me start again. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective August 10, 2032, for Troy LaMaire, Caretaker 2 for the City of Torrington Parks Division, after 11 years of service.
Summa.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Rouette. And are there questions from the trustees for the City Employees Retirement Account? Hearing none. I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving into item eight, and again, this is staying with the City Employees Retirement Fund. Ask Me, Council 4, Local 1579. This is the Board of Education. I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective February 3, 2025, for Keith Todd, Custodian for the City of Torrington Board of Education, after six years of service.
So moved.
Thank you. I heard Councilwoman Iveyne and Councilwoman Cavanero. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective May 1, 2025, for Mark Burke, Custodian for the City of Torrington Board of Education, after 30.75 years of service.
Summa.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. For the Board of Trustees for the Police and Fireman's Pension Fund, Ask Me, Council 15, Local 442, I will entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective November 7, 2024, for Robert Simon, Patrolman A for the City of Torrington Police Department, after 17 years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto. And this is the Board of Trustees for Police and Fire.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman, I mean, Commissioner Cogswell. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective March 1, 2024, for Michael Dettorio, Lieutenant for the City of Torrington Police Department, after 26 years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, seconded by Commissioner Battle. Are there any questions on this calculation? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective March 1, 2025, for Louis Gonzalez, Captain of the City of Torrington Police Department, after 25 years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
And seconded by Commissioner McElroy. And are there questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective October 2, 2039, for Nicholas Latiri, Sergeant for the City of Torrington Police Department, after 10.52 years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
And seconded by Commissioner Battle. Any questions or comments on this calculation? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Staying with the Police and Fire Pension Fund, IAFF, Council 15, Local 1567. Item 14, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective April 1, 2025, for Mark Hilpert, Lieutenant of the City of Torrington Fire Department, after 28 years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, seconded by Commissioner McElroy. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 15, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective March 23, 2025, for Michael Riggs, Lieutenant for the City of Torrington Fire Department, after 25.54 years.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, seconded by Commissioner Cogswell. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 16, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective March 1, 2025, for Mark Capel, Lieutenant of the City of Torrington Fire Department, after 30 years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto.
Second.
And seconded by Commissioner McElroy. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 17, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective March 1, 2025, for David Casper, Battalion Chief for the City of Torrington Fire Department, after 27 years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, seconded by Commissioner Cogswell. Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, seconded by Commissioner Cogswell. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 18, I'll entertain a motion to accept the pension computation effective March 1, 2025 for Patrick Doyle, Battalion Chief for the City of Torrington Fire Department after 27 years of service.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Benedetto, seconded by Commissioner McElroy. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. And this wraps up a rather lengthy list of trustee actions. And because it's a special meeting, there's no room for comments. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cogswell, and seconded by Commissioner Benedetto. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 7:02. Thank you.
Mayor, is that dropped?
Yes. Thank you, Heather. Okay, we only have two more in the lineup, this evening's lineup. So let me call this public hearing to order for the record. Today is Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. This is a public hearing held by the City Council and WPCA Authority. We have council members attending in person and via Zoom for the record. I have Councilman Iveyne, Councilwoman Spino, Councilwoman Rouette, and Councilman Cavanaro attending in person. And via Zoom, I have Councilman Oliver and Councilman Waldron. Is he still on?
Yep.
Oh, there you are. Thank you. So full board this evening. For the record also, it is now 7:09 PM. So let's jump right into the purpose of this public hearing to solicit citizen input regarding the proposed sale of the following property owned by the City of Torrington. Property address 403 Torrington West Street, parcel ID MAP Block Lot Number 133008022. Before we jump into public comment, could I have the notice read into the record, please?
Notice is hereby given that the City of Torrington Board of Councilmen will hold a public hearing on June 17th, 2025, after the special meetings that commence at 6 o'clock PM in the City Hall Auditorium, Torrington City Hall, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, regarding the proposed sale of the following property owned by the City of Torrington. Property address 403 Torrington West Street, parcel ID MAP Block Lot 133008022. The purpose of this hearing is to allow the public to express their opinions on the proposed sale of this property. A detailed description of the property and terms of the sale are available for review at the Torrington City Clerk's Office or online. All interested parties are invited to attend the public hearing and will have an opportunity to comment. Written comments may also be submitted in advance to Michael Magistrally Corporation Counsel, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. The public may attend in person or by Zoom and will be granted up to three minutes to comment. Instructions for participating by phone or online are available at torringtonct.org. All interested persons are invited to attend and be heard. Dated this 13th day of June, 2025. Carol L. Anderson, City Clerk.
Thank you, Heather. All right, I'll open this, this portion of the hearing to the public. I'll, because it is a public hearing, I need to call this three times. So first call, is there anyone from the public wishing to address the council with regard to the sale of 403 Torrington West Street? Second call, anyone from the public wishing to address the council with regard to the sale of, the proposed sale of 403 Torrington West Street? And third call, anyone from the public wishing to address the council with regard to the proposed sale of 403 Torrington West Street? Seeing and hearing none, I am going to declare this public hearing closed. Declare the public hearing closed. Public hearing is closed. It calls for an adjournment. We don't adjourn public hearings, do we? It calls for an adjournment. Do we adjourn public hearings? Okay, we're closed. We're going to move right into our next meeting. So for the record, this is the regular meeting of the City Council WPCA. It is still Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. And we still have all six of our council members, as previously identified, participating in person in Zoom. And it is now 7:12 PM. I'll jump right into item one. This would be a roll call vote by the Board of Councilmen. So I need a motion for authority to sell the following property owned by the City of Torrington. Address 403 Torrington West Street, parcel ID MAP Block Lot 133008022. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro. And any questions or comments before I call the motion? Roll call.
I think I had an opportunity to hear a little bit about this property because if you Google it, there's still a house on the property. So I understand that this is, this house has burned down and there's, maybe the Board of Council could, for the record.
This property was the subject of an arson many years ago. I can't remember what year it happened, but it burnt down. And the property owner was not the person who committed the arson. But he didn't have the funds to address the property, from what I understand. So the city demolished the building and put a lien on the property for the cost of demolition. And then as time went by, and again, this is all before my time, he gave, he gave the city a warranty deed in lieu of a foreclosure of the lien. So that's how the city came to take title to this property. So at this point, it's a vacant lot, except there is a garage still there that didn't burn down. Several years ago, our facilities manager, Jamie Saicora, I think there was a, and I don't know if it was a request for proposal or just an auction, but there was an attempt to sell the property at an auction, and there were no bidders. Nobody bid at all. So a couple of months ago, the city received an inquiry from Mr. Paul Mitchell, who offered to purchase the property for $30,000.
Yes.
The reason we had to have the public hearing is that there's a statute that requires a public hearing unless the city acquired property through a foreclosure or it was valued at $10,000 or less, then neither one of those applied here. So we had to have the public hearing. So I did enter into a contract. We have a signed contract with Mr. Mitchell. He put a deposit down at $3,000. The sale price is $30,000. Before we executed that, though, we sent letters to all the adjoining, the abutting property owners and said, you know, we've been approached, we have an offer, but we thought we would offer it to you and as an abutting property owner, if you wanted to maybe make it, you know, merge it with your parcel. And we didn't hear back from anybody. So that's why it's here to sell the property to Mr. Mitchell for $30,000.
Yeah. And I think the only thing that would add to that is actually the genesis of the lien that the city had on this property came out of blight. There was blight enforcement. And the negotiated settlement of those blight fines was, as Corporation Counsel has indicated, a warranty deed.
Well, there's always a story, is my.
There's always a story. Yeah, it was. This is, and there were very concerted efforts to see if the abutting property owners were interested in this property before we listed it for sale, before we solicited bids through an RFP process. So I do think that we've done everything we can to inform anybody that might be interested in this property that it is available. And we are fortunate that Mr. Mitchell has stepped forward with it.
Well done, Mayor, or whoever made the decision to do that.
Yeah.
Well done.
Well, a little revenue.
Thank you.
That money will go back in the blight fund?
Yes. So the funds that we receive from this will be returned to the blight fund account. All right. If there are no additional questions, I'm going to call this motion all. Oh, no, excuse me. I've got to do a roll call. Sorry. I'll start from the screen. Councilman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilman Waldron?
Yes.
Councilman Iveyne?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rouette?
Yes.
Councilman Cavanaro?
Yes.
Good. All right. So this motion is approved. And Corporation Counsel will proceed with the closing. All right. Item two, I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're open to the public. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move into item three. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, this doesn't require a motion. This is in response to, at our last meeting, there was a request for something, a report from the School Building Committee and representatives from ONG regarding the roof leak at the Torrington High School, newly constructed. I know that Mario Longabuco from the Building Committee reached out to me. And we have with us this evening, Mr. Cravanzola. Please, yeah.
Good evening. My name is Dave Cravanzola. I'm Assistant Vice President of ONG Industries, our building group. And also, I'm the one to provide corporate oversight for the project happening at the Torrington School Project. I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to talk to you and give you more information about some of your curiosities about what's happened. So there were, I know there was, there was discussion at one of the last council meetings and also an article that was published in the paper shortly afterward. They both align with a couple of the things. They relate to a water pump controller. It was one of the items that caused the school to close early one day, as well as some leaks. So I want to start by just reassuring you that what you have is a building built, that was designed and built to very high standards. It's a state-of-the-art educational facility, and it's really something that we should all be proud of. As is customary in any type of construction, there are things like this that happen where we do get a leak or some things that we're, we're working out some kinks in the project. These are highly complex projects with integrated systems. And they are all things that we are used to dealing with and we are prepared to continue to deal with for the lifespan of the project. What's most important through this process, though, is just the communication. The communication with the users and then taking very swift and diligent action to correct them. And that has happened. And I want to thank the city and the Building Committee and Board of Education and the school staff for being such good partners and keeping that communication up. It's helping with this process of being able to address these things quickly. So I first want to talk about the domestic water booster pump issue. So there, because of the height of the building and the pressures that are available in the city water source, it needs to be pumped up to the higher levels of the building to deliver domestic water. This, it's a three-pump system, and it's controlled by a complicated controller that runs all three. In the morning, I forgot what day it was, we received word that it was not working. We immediately called for service, and they had dismissed school. We sent a tech out to the school in the afternoon who was able to diagnose that the controller, it was, it was fried. And the school staff was instructed on how to operate the pumps in hand, meaning without all of the highly technical control, just to say on, off, to deliver the water. Since then, shortly thereafter, an updated controller was installed, checked out, and has been working fine for a few weeks. This is one of the systems of the building that does not have redundancy built into it, as far as this controller, unlike things like the heating and cooling systems that have, they have backup systems to make sure they're operating. At some point, it becomes ineffective from a cost standpoint to have backup systems for everything. So with that, it was truly a one-off situation. I have never seen one of these fail before. The design engineer has been involved. It's, I believe that's an isolated incident, and I don't foresee us having that again. Moving on to the leaks, since the building was occupied, we've experienced four leaks in the building. They were all immediately addressed by the installing contractor under ONG's oversight to make sure that they were completed. And any finishes such as ceiling tiles, paint, were all, the area was inspected to make sure that the roof leak was addressed. And then at the time that that was inspected, we replaced the finishes to restore them to like-new condition. Just to put this in perspective, is that the total rainwater from each of these events that entered the building is less than what you would consume in a given day through drinking a few water bottles, just to put that into perspective. And it's not uncommon for a project of this size. And I just want to give you a little example. There was one of the leaks that involved a six-inch-long section of roof where two pieces of the membrane overlap each other. The seal was not, the integrity of that seal just failed. It was six inches of seam. The building, as it stands right now, has over 19,000 feet or three and a half miles of those seams in it. So to say that this is a fraction of a percentage of something is truly what we're dealing with. As far as finishes go, throughout the course of the leaks, I believe we had to replace about 64 square feet of tiles, just like you have in here. Similarly, in a building this size, there's about 253,000 square feet of those ceiling tiles. So again, we're dealing with, we're dealing with things that are so minor in nature, and I get it. I get it. For the people that are occupants, they see some water come in, and it's concerning. But I, rest assured, it's, it's under control. We do see this, and we are, we are there to correct it. There was talk about the gym floor that received some water. That's the middle school gym. This is a condition that's, it's a little different because it's at the point where the new middle school gymnasium is being constructed right next to the existing gym and locker rooms that were being demolished. So there were some conditions of construction that are temporary because we're not, we weren't ready to make the final connections yet. We are at that point now. That, those leaks through various attempts have been corrected. We have not seen any water come through, even in the most rain events. We have been monitoring that floor. There is currently no visible damage to that floor. But we do have the installing contractor returning to the site in July to start installing the new gym floor of the main gymnasium. At that point, they're certified installers. We will have them conduct an inspection and make sure any repairs or remediation of that floor that are deemed necessary will be done. There were, in addition to the roof leaks, there were two HVAC system leaks. And these were mainly related to condensate water, which is the byproduct of, of cooling space, especially when it's humid, condensate is generated. It has to get piped away from the units. The units were all installed to the manufacturer's recommendations. The name of the company is Trane. They're an international company that provides these units all over the world. We experienced two leaks, and we immediately called the manufacturer out. They came out, they inspected every single unit on the building, worked with our trade contractor, and came up with an updated detail for this piping. That piping detail was, was fixed on all of the units. And since then, there have been no issues with that. So we believe we have that taken care of. It was a repair done at no cost to the project. So I'm happy to take questions. But really, to sum it up, what you have is a well-designed, well-constructed building that is going to last decades and decades. And we're here and will remain here to address it as we have been.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cravanzola. Questions?
What's the malfunction in the controller? A manufacturing flaw or, you know, it's not, it wasn't a design flaw. It was really kind of, it was something wrong with it when it was installed.
Correct. A package system for managing the domestic water boosting was specified, submitted on, installed. It was something that was either, maybe there was a manufacturing defect that put some sort of inherent bug in it, or there was some component of it that failed, but it was, it was simply a malfunction part that was replaced under warranty.
Okay. Which we kind of almost have to expect. You're installing. You, you're installing lots of these, and there's bound to be some kind of mistake in the creation of it, right? The, we definitely have a lot of roof area. It's hard to track down every possible seam that way. But is there a way to maybe review after we get a terrible storm? I'd like it to survive the hundred-year storm, and that really will be a test of, of the roofing, right? Is there a way to, you know, obviously, it's raining now, but maybe the sideways rain will test how well the roof is put together? Is there, under what conditions should this roofing material hold up to?
I, I don't know the specifics of the, the actual performance data that was required, if it's, you know, what hurricane category. Or I know, depending on where you are geographically, the roofs are rated for certain things. I, I know that the, you know, this is a roof that's manufactured by, I believe it's GAF, which again, there are millions of square feet of GAF roofing installed every year. The, the roofs were all installed and had not only certified installers, but the manufacturer also came out and made inspections throughout the course of the project. So as far as its ability to weather storms, we've had, this spring, we have had a considerable amount of rain, some of it driving. It's unlikely that more are going to surface. You know, there's really the, the first test drive of putting some of these roofing conditions through the weather, and we've come through a majority of that.
Okay.
That answers your question.
Yeah. Yes, yes, it does. You know, what, one of our major concern is, in the past, there's a lot of liability in terms of, yeah, we, we just think it's a leaky roof, but then it bleeds the mold and other issues. We've had temporary classrooms going way back that had mold issues. And I think we're extending the life too much, and we, we had to address moving students around and so, some liability concerns with that there. And it goes back to roofs in different buildings also having leak problems. And that, that's kind of when we, we're getting a little twitchy around that now. Just saying, yeah, brand-new, expensive buildings, and now, now we see that. So we, we just want to know that when these buildings experience this, that, that we could get actionable response to make sure we could track that down and, you know, get to it, address the issue. So thank you for being here today on that, so.
And I think to that, just to, the odds are stacked more in our favor at this point. You know, the, the selection of materials, the design of materials that go into buildings are all generally, they're, they're more moisture-resistant than products were previously. And as I had mentioned, the, the process that we go through when we do have evidence of water entering the building is making sure that, one, that the, the source of the water has stopped in its entirety, that the area is inspected to make sure that it is not showing signs of any sort of, you know, continued exposure to moisture that would deteriorate the product. You know, we'll dry it, we'll replace it, and then at that point, it's, it's covered back up so that it's aesthetically pleasing. But there are a series of steps that we take in each one of these instances to make sure that something that is a problem is not being covered up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Yes. Councilman Cavanero?
Yes. Mr. Cravanzola? Right? Yes. David?
You can call me Dave.
Dave?
Unless I'm in trouble, unless I'm in trouble, then you.
All right. Let me see here. Just following up with, from, from Councilman Iveyne. I was chairman of the Board of Education at the time that we were experiencing those, those repeated recurring roof leaks at the middle school, what was the middle school. And I know for a fact that City of Torrington was, was liable for millions of dollars, okay, in payments due to the, the recurring mold issue and students that, and families that were affected. So this, this immediately triggers those, particularly for me. You know, again, I was on the board, and, and it was astonishing to me. And at that time, there was a lot of finger pointing. It's nothing to do with you or what's going on right now. But at that, on that particular project, there was an awful lot of finger pointing as to why that metal roof failed, and not only failed, but failed repeatedly and continuously over a long period of time, such that the mold became such an issue that kids were getting sick, and the city was sued, and taxpayers were, were clobbered by this. So as much as this seems like a, a minor event on a brand-new building, I understand that, at least as a city councilman who has past experience with this exact issue on a prior building, I, I feel compelled to, to get your, to get, well, not from you, but, but, you know, from, from the project management perspective, some, some guarantees that whatever efforts are required to see that the install was done. So you had a seam that failed, and I understand it's one small seam on thousands of foot, feet of seams. What, was there effort to check that, you know? So somebody did, it's the installer who did it, somebody messed up. Somebody didn't do it correctly, correct? Do, what, what confidence do we have that underneath all of that roofing, that installer, the people they hired, did it correct? You know what I'm saying?
There, I mean, there.
What are you, trouble shoot that?
Right. There are, there are a series of checks and balances as we go, making sure that, it starts with making sure that all the paperwork is in place, all the submittals are in place. Every material that goes in the building goes through our eyes, the design team's eyes, to make sure that it's in compliance with the documents. We hold pre-installation conferences and set the expectations for how the work is to be conducted out there.
Right.
There are inspections that ONG does every day, and we know that, you know, on these projects, there is, there is no possible way to provide one-on-one oversight of the work.
No, no.
At, at the height of the project, we had, we had about 200 workers on the site.
Yeah.
So to, to be able to see everything that every worker is doing all eight or 10 hours a day
Correct. I, I get that, sir.
Would require a.
I get that, Dave. I, I get that.
So, you know.
Real world, yes.
And we, so can I sit here or stand here today and tell you that we have found every single issue that could ever possibly go wrong with that roof? I, I can't do that.
No. Let me ask you, let me, let me pose the question this way, because this is really where my concern is. Okay. If, to your point, you cannot inspect, that is not your job to inspect when you hire an installer to do something, the expectation is they do it to code, and they do it professionally, and it's not an issue. And if there are occasional failures, that's what happens, that's life. The problem is repeated occurrences, instances of a failure. If, if that turns out to be true, that with these increasingly more damaging rainstorms and, and weather events that we have, in this particular instance, who would be, who would the city hold responsible for that? The installer? If it was found that there was repeated occurrences of this kind of failed seam installation?
Well, so to your, exactly to your point there, what would happen is if, if we started to see a trend where there was a, a more recurring theme of seams failing, we would bring the roofing manufacturer out ourselves and have them conduct a thorough investigation of every seam on that roof?
Okay.
If, if what was happening out there would warrant that type of inspection?
And in the world of litigation, would they be the responsible party if it was their responsibility? I have no idea how these contracts are written.
Well, the city of contract entered into a contract with ONG Industries. We in turn entered into a contract.
Contract with them. And if there is, that there was sloppy workmanship, it would be your responsibility to hold them liable for, for damages, which, again, I'm not talking small potatoes here. It was in the millions for the middle school, okay, for those kids. So that answers that question. Let me ask you about the HVAC leaks. That, that was just because of the, that was, you're confident that that was a one-time fix on those?
Yes.
Okay. It's not the unit itself, it was a part of the, of these units?
It's the piping that comes off the unit that has a trap in a role similar to like what you have under your, your kitchen or bathroom sink that prevents air and gas from coming out. They extended the leg of it to provide a, a larger barrier from outside air affecting the condensate's ability to, to leave the unit.
Okay. Was, was that related to the quantity of rain that was occurring at that time?
I don't, I don't know if it was directly related to that. I think what was all, it was more so related to the fact that when this happened was some of the first highly humid weather
Yeah.
Came in that, where those units were operating at a considerable capacity and were generating a lot of condensate.
Yeah, I guess my question to you, Dave, is this. If, if this was, if this, why was this failure not known? What, why was the bar set? How can I phrase this? What, what gives you confidence that this is not going to happen again? That whatever remedy was put upon this, why, and why, if it required heavier-duty material, why wasn't that installed to begin with, given the fact that weather patterns over the last 15 years, anybody in this room knows, are radically and significantly more damaging to buildings than they were when we were growing up ourselves? So, do you know what I'm saying? So the failure of those HVAC units was, whatever fail there, were other, there's many HVAC units in this, in this complex of buildings. Were, were they inspected, and were the same fixes?
Yeah, the, these are specific to the large units that sit on top of the roof, not the other equipment throughout the building.
Not the other ones, okay.
Nope.
So everything for those HVACs, that was replaced and, and upgraded essentially?
Yes. So, and what happens is the, the design team through communication with the owner comes up with a program of what they want the building to be. They talk about what they want to be in the building. And they, the design team then specifies equipment to serve the needs. And they, you know, I don't, I don't remember if Train was the base of design, but they're one of the largest manufacturers of rooftop air-handling equipment in the world. And what happens is the specification reverts to the manufacturer's instructions for how highly technical systems like that are to be piped. So that, so say that a, an Aon unit is piped away, Aon, the manufacturer wants it, in a, a Train unit. Train's instructions themselves, the manufacturer, had recommended that this trap be five inches tall. They were all installed. We inspected them, made sure that, we made sure that they were installed to the manufacturer's requirements.
Right.
It, it simply.
Wasn't sufficient.
It simply was not sufficient. We brought the, we brought the, the manufacturer themselves to the site, and then working with us and our, our HVAC trade contractor came up with some ideas, say, well, we could do this, we could do that. And it was agreed upon that changing that from five inches to 10 inches was going to solve the problem. And it appears to have solved the problem.
Okay. So you're confident that in a similar situation with high rain and high humidity, whatever triggered that event, that, that these units can handle that going forward?
Yes.
Okay. My last question then is with the roofing material itself, the GAF, I just had my, my home roof done, and I know there's many, GAF, it's, it's an industry standard. I get that. But there's also many levels of, of durability and strength. Because the installer was definitely trying to upsell me on, on the highest level because of the recurring, you know, weather patterns. Do we know what level, was this the heavier-duty roofing material on these roofs?
I don't know. They, they typically measure in mil thickness, whether it's O6O or whatever it is. I don't have that information at my, but I do know that the, I don't recall anything that was out of the ordinary. The, the roof membrane was not something that was value-engineered on the project. So what was, what was designed from day one on the project from a quality standpoint is what was submitted on and approved and installed. So there were no compromises on the, on the quality of the roofing.
Yeah, but that wouldn't show up for years. What was the, let me think here. Were there any failures related to the roofing material itself, the GAF, did, did that?
Well, no, be, no, there were not. It's, it was a, like I said, one of the, you know, six inches of the.
No, no, I got that, I got that. But, but the roofing material itself didn't, didn't fail. Okay. I think that, that's it. Thank you for coming here and actually explaining all this to us. My, my main concern was just that, you know, due diligence, that, that people are paying attention to this because the consequences of repeated failures are going to be, there's a whole bunch of lawyers in Torrington who are well aware of how much the city had to pay for lawsuits related to this issue. And I think a number of them are hungry for more. So I'll, I'll let it stand at that. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Councilman. Anybody else have questions for Mr. Cravanzola?
The HVAC units, do they have an indicator to tell you they kicked off or was, yeah, how did that go? Did, do we just notice that they weren't running?
Yeah, the, the condensate drains are not monitored by the building management system to say if they're working or not. It's a, they're typically a gravity-fed type system. If something were to happen and, and a piece of equipment is, does shut down, yes, it does go through the building management system, and people are notified.
Okay. And thank you again for appearing here, explaining this to us.
We're good. We're good. Thank you very much for.
Is there a need for me to stick around for anything else, for other public comment, or?
I don't, I don't think so. I think you're good. I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, lady.
Thank you.
All right, let's move into item number four, get some of our business behind us here. I will entertain a motion to accept the public hearing meeting minutes from June 2nd, 2025. Thank you, Councilman Iveyne, second by Councilman Cavanero. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 4B, I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from June 2nd, 2025.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilman Iveyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, this is just cleaning up a motion that was taken back in February. So what I need is a motion to amend the action or motion taken on February 18th, 2025, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a land exchange between the City of Torrington and R and R Corporation to reflect the correct business name as B and R Corporation in Harwinton, Connecticut, following a favorable recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, second by Councilwoman Spino. Are there questions?
Yeah, I think that B changes everything.
It does.
Were there two land exchanges, or was this the only one with Harwinton?
What's the question?
Was there two land exchanges, or was this the only one?
This was, this was the only one, yeah.
Okay.
And this was, so B and R is the, the parent organization, I believe, of Supreme Industries, and this is down at the wastewater treatment plant. This land is technically, it's in Harwinton. And it was just a swap. They wanted a parcel, you know, to expand their operation. The, the parcel that we're getting from them will help with our network of trails, I think, Ray, is that right? Yeah. So it seemed like a good thing for the city to do. And yeah, there was just, every single document except one had their name right, B and R. But the one document that had R and R is the one that somehow got sucked in to the motions.
Okay. So R and R will not be mad at us?
No. There is no such thing as, well, there could be an alibi somewhere.
There is, I think.
Is there?
Randy Raymond, yeah.
Oh, that's his business?
Uh, I don't think there.
Right?
All right.
I thought he was R A R. Anyway, doesn't matter. It's not him.
All right. So motion is made, and seconded if there are no other questions. I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item six, I will entertain a motion to reappoint Jim Peskotour as a regular member of the Park and Recreation Commission, a term set to expire November 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. I heard Councilwoman Ruette. And are there any questions or comments before I call this motion? I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion, this is in two parts. 7A, to appoint Kevin Steck, who is a tenant, as a regular member of the Fair Rent Commission to fill the remainder of a term set to expire June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilwoman Ruette. Questions or comments?
Thank you.
I know for the next 14 days, yes.
Is this, does the commission have to have a balance landlord?
Yes.
So we're.
Landlord, tenants, and neither.
We amended that, that language, you know, as recommended by the corporate council.
We haven't finished that quite yet.
He's got more to amend evidently.
Yeah, okay.
More work.
That, that's all I.
But we, I know that you've been trying to get someone on, so I'm thrilled.
Good, thank you.
And I'm just going to express my gratitude to Corporation Council for hunting down a tenant. It's, it's a little bit harder than you would believe, so. It's a, it's a little bit harder than you would believe, so, um, there, let me call this motion, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, uh, to give him a little more time than fourteen days, let's look at 7B. I'll entertain the motion to reappoint Kevin Steck as a regular member of the Fair Rent Commission for a term to set to expire June 30th, 2027. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilwoman Iveyne. Okay, and if there are no questions on this?
I, I just want to comment and give credit to Heather for picking up on that. So, when, when we first proposed Kevin Steck, and she said, what terms are you going to fill? Are you going to do this one or that one? She said, because you know, there's this one that just expires at the end of June. So, maybe you want to reappoint him to another term. So, thank you, Heather, for picking up on that.
Still working in? Yeah.
Well, we don't have, oh, that's right, those reappointments. Well, maybe we can deal with this one first, and then we can talk about that.
All right, let me close out this motion. If there are no questions?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Not to the specific, but, but to the process. Are we looking for people to represent landlords in this thing?
Actually, the spot, the, the spot that is remaining open is another tenant spot.
Oh, okay.
We got enough landlords.
You got enough landlords, okay.
Because they have that combination of, how many do we need on this?
So, the ordinance has its stance now, and I don't think we're changing this, is seven members. And it was, I think, two landlords, two tenants, and then the rest, neither one or the other, something like that. One of the amendments that we're working on in the ordinance is to include some, some language that says, if at all possible, or something like that.
Okay.
Because we've had issues, you know, filling those slots. But, but at this point, we have, I think, we have two people who are neither landlords nor tenants, two landlords and two tenants.
Yeah, and just a technical question, Michael, for the landlord representation, does the landlord, is it sufficient that the landlord owns property in Torrington? Or do they themselves have to reside in Torrington? If they're, if they're not living in Torrington but have property in Torrington, can they serve?
I think they have to be residents.
Because I have a, there's a long way of saying, I have a name of somebody if you want. I'll pass it along to you.
And to be honest with you, I don't, I don't really know.
They have a couple of properties here, they don't, they live in Litchfield.
Well, that, I think the, um, the Fair Rent Ordinance doesn't stipulate, it just says landlord.
Okay.
Um, whether there's some other ordinance that deals with boards in general that requires people who sit on city boards to be residents, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know.
I, I made an assumption that they would be, you know, residents of Torrington as well, but, um, that might open up the opportunity, yeah, it might be another opportunity to expand the search. That wasn't a requirement.
All right, I'll pass that name along anyway, and you can.
Okay, thank you.
You know, figure it out.
Yeah. Yeah, but this is before the ordinance subcommittee still.
It might be, it might be worth adding language about whether or not they should, a residency should be required.
But if we're having trouble finding people now.
It's the tenants, you know, landlords and others aren't so problematic. It's the tenants that are hard to, and this mirrors the statute. We're required to have a balance of.
It's really consideration, if, you know.
Well, that's, the ordinance committee just used the language in the statute. I know that there's more language coming from corporate council or to help with clarification.
And we actually, we, um, Fair Rent Commission is meeting this Thursday, and the only thing on the agenda is to finish up their review of the ordinance to make recommendations to the ordinance subcommittee.
Okay.
All right, um,
Who's vote?
Is we vote?
Yeah, let's close this motion, so I'll enter, or excuse me, I'll call it, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, do we want to add an agenda item right now? Why don't we, why don't we do that? So, um, I, of course, would need two thirds of a vote to add this to the agenda. Uh, what I'm looking for is, um, authority to add to the agenda a reappointment of current Fair Rent Commission members who have agreed to, um, continue in service. So.
So moved.
Whose terms end on June 30th?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette, second by Councilwoman Spino. And I'll call it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so, help me, Heather, we've got Connie Quinn, right? And Deborah Brown.
From who?
Travis Lipinski?
Haven't heard from Travis.
Okay, so, um, yeah, really. So, the motion I'm looking for is a motion to reappoint Connie Quinn. We could take it as one, one motion, right? To reappoint Connie Quinn, I think it's Constance Quinn, and
Deborah Brown.
Deborah Brown, to, as regular members of the Fair Rent Commission for a term set to expire June 30th, 2027.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Spino. And are there questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, good. All right, we'll move into item eight. Uh, I will entertain a motion to extend the current bid contract for unlimited car washing detailing of city vehicles F for FY 2526 at the same price and terms as a current contract for the Torrington Car Care DBA Platinum Car Wash of Torrington, having been previously approved by the Board of Safety? Thank you. As further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated May 26th, 2025.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
I heard, uh, Councilwoman Spino and second by Councilwoman Iveyne. Questions or comments?
This was, they only saw the one bid? Were they the only ones to bid? So, I know there was other company that had expressed interest?
I think it's an extension.
I know.
Right.
Why, why are we extending it if there's?
Because we can, I won't, I'll let her talk, sorry. We talked about this.
Okay, sorry, you did?
This is an extension of an existing contract we have with Platinum Car Wash on East Main Street. So, when we went out to bid last year, yes, there was only one bidder. And it was Platinum Car Wash, and City Council awarded that contract to Platinum. And this is an extension of that contract, which has the extension clauses in it, brought up, I believe, five years.
Just smiling because I, so we won't go out to bid now until, so this was in 2024? So, this motion is to go out for?
This would be for fiscal year 2526.
Okay, will you go out to bid in 2026?
We could feasibly go up, back out to bid in the, likely would do it in the spring of '26.
Okay.
For the fiscal year '2627.
For some reason, I think more car washes are interested in serving the city vehicles.
Yeah, one of the issues that, I mean, from local, you know, we have three car washes, well, I think four. It's the detailing. Platinum is the only one that provides a full service detailing that we're aware of. And they're the only one that bid.
Ray, quick question, as, uh, there's half price 125 for biannual per vehicle, why biannual? Is it if we discontinue a car, or?
Um, you know, we, we have the, you know, authorization, while we have the ability to remove and add vehicles, you know, per the contract. It's the way, it's just the way the billing and the contract was set up, so, if, say, for a particular, a vehicle doesn't get the detail, then they're not billed for it. The unlimited car washing is billed, really, whether they get the car wash or not, but, um, we did pare the number down, I know this, um, when we went out to bid, originally, we had seventy-two vehicles, um, in the program. Um, we did pare that down this year to fifty-five vehicles.
And, no, is there ongoing analysis that, you know, we're trying to get more longevity of our city vehicles through this process and?
Right, and, and that's the ultimate goal. And if we can keep the, you know, the undercarriages clean, um, and, you know, continuous car washing, particularly, you know, during the winter months with the salt and on the roads, keeping the undercarriages clean, studies have shown you will extend the life of the vehicles.
Okay, great, thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving into item nine. Uh, I will entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute, and administer a contract for firefighter personal protective equipment for the purchase of ten to twenty sets of PPE gear at the price of $4,036 per set to Firematic Supply Company, Inc. of Rocky Hill. This has, was just approved by the Board of Public Safety this evening. Uh, and the purchase will be funded from the Fire Department capital account as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated June 12th, 2025.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilwoman Iveyne. Are there questions?
Yeah, I do. Why is it ten to twenty sets? Don't they know exactly how many they, they need? Plus or minus two?
I don't really. I am, I honestly, I'm not sure, and I know that, um.
Well, it says for ten sets, is all they're asking for.
For the purchase of ten, yeah, but the, the motion is for ten to twenty sets.
Yeah, so, and the actual request for proposal, it says forty thousand three hundred sixty for ten sets.
But don't, this, this is the wearable equipment, so it doesn't age out, and I think they're timing it to hit that date, and then they'll have new equipment.
What they do, yeah, it's still, to what Councilwoman Iveyne is suggesting, we're awarding this to this company. And while it may be that they only need ten sets, ten sets currently, this becomes a purchase order, and as they need more PPE, they can, um, purchase off that purchase order up to twenty sets.
That would be a much better way of wording this, but.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm looking at the letter that, um, that our purchasing agent submitted, and you're right, it, it reads rather clumsily for purchase of approximately ten to twenty sets. But again, the, um, the, uh, the plan is for there to be a purchase order that will allow for the acquisition of up to twenty sets.
All right, I don't want to make a big, oh.
I know, I don't want to make a big deal of it either, but the actual proposal is for forty thousand three hundred sixty, which would only be ten sets.
This stuff should line up.
Yeah, and you're right, because in the narrative, it says purchase of approximately ten to twenty sets. And you're right, the cost is clearly for ten sets.
I think we should just do it for the ten sets, and then they come back.
That it.
That's good.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, if that's what you want to do.
I, I think there's a long turnaround time on this, no? So, is there? Was that indicated anywhere here?
The turnaround time for, um, processing?
Uh, does this have to be done tonight? Can we table it until we get our ducks lined up on this?
Uh, you know.
Asking for, and what the purchase order really says?
I.
They don't say it in here, it's the purchase.
Well, it says forty there, but they're asking for approximately eighty thousand. They're saying what they need is eighty thousand.
Is she on the line?
Is Penny?
So, we have new recruits that are currently in the academy. I know that we do need to get some for those new recruits.
They can come back with another motion. I think we just amend this motion to, for ten sets, because that's what the RFP was for. Forty thousand three hundred sixteen.
Yeah, I'm just, I, I'm willing to approve, if they need twenty, I'll approve twenty. I just want everything to line up, and we have enough problems.
Yeah, I agree.
With mismatched funding, um, requests from various departments, other departments being much bigger and more problematic than this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, you know.
So, the motion was made by Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilwoman Iveyne. Will you amend your motion to reflect the purchase of ten sets of PPE gear at a price of $4,036 per set?
Is there anyone willing to, you know, motion for twenty sets? No?
This is an auction.
Well, that, that's them, they approved ten to twenty. Right, so.
That's them.
That's them.
We're the city council, we would like A to equal A and B to equal B, I mean, at least I do.
Okay, yes, I, I move to amend for ten sets.
Make the motion.
Yes.
And I'll amend my motion, thank you.
Okay, so the amended motion reads, for the purchase of ten sets of PPE gear at a price of $4,036 per set at the Firematic Supply Company, Inc. Motion is, uh, the amended motion made by Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilwoman Iveyne. Any further discussion?
To answer the question on turnaround time, the quote says up to sixty days.
Okay. Could you repeat that?
Up to sixty days. Turnaround time.
Oh, it's too much.
Right, but the amount is for ten. No.
Oh, there will be a ten percent increase each year after the first year. So, we can get clarification, is Deputy Chief Trip, um, back in, on the 23rd? Let's move forward with the ten, so that this purchase, um, order can be submitted for the ten. We'll get clarification and come back to the council for, um, another motion.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
All right, amended motion.
This, this is sloppy and, and, you know, we talk about, this is still forty thousand dollars of taxpayer money that's basically non-tracked, non-tracked.
Well, it's forty thousand for ten, it's eighty thousand for twenty, as you break it out, yeah.
What I'm saying is, they, they asked for ten sets.
Yeah.
At two thousand per, or four thousand per, so that's forty thousand, that's what they asked for. But then, they're saying in the motion that they want enough funding for twenty. What I'm saying is, you know, get, get your paperwork right. All these departments need to do that. And if Public Safety doesn't catch it, that's unfortunate, but, you know, we'll catch it here.
All right, motion is, yes.
Before, could you relate to the, uh, Board of Public Safety, uh, our sentiments?
I will.
That we've wasted an awful lot of time here, and there's a lot of mumbly-stumbly stuff because they didn't get this themselves, catch it themselves.
I will certainly convey that, sure. All right, motion's made and seconded, and final call for comment.
Well, one more thing, can we just, uh, repeat what it is exactly we're voting for right now?
So, the motion, the motion as amended reads, um, you will authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute, and administer a contract for firefighter personal protective equipment for the purchase of ten sets of PPE gear at a price of $4,036 per set to Firematic Supply Company, Inc. in Rocky Hill pending, actually, not pending, already approved by the Board of Public Safety, and the purchase will be funded from the Fire Department capital account.
Could you, could you add, as indicated, what, what is their purchase order here? You have it already on there.
Yeah.
Please put that. The purchase order says they want ten sets.
I think the PP, I think the, um, RFP number is where it specifically says ten sets.
Yeah, can we reference that in the moment? So, now they know, this is why we're doing it.
Yeah.
You know, if you want more, get your P, get your RFP correct.
Oh, and Penny does all the bidding, so.
Are we? I'm looking to the movers and the seconders, um, so.
As indicated on whatever this document.
So, um, to, would you, would you further amend your motion to reflect? I'll read it out loud. Vote to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city of Torrington to award, execute, administer a contract for firefighter personal protective equipment for the purchase of ten sets of PPE gear at a price of four thousand thirty-six dollars per set as indicated in the RFP number, PPE zero two two zero five two eight two five, as submitted by Firematic Supply Company, Inc. of Rocky Hill, and as approved by the Board of Public Safety.
I'll amend my motion.
Thank you. Will you amend your second?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, motion is made and seconded.
It's fourteen.
But it sounds like there's more discussion.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, still not clear to me.
No, I don't disagree, but this, this is.
Yeah. Oh, well. Don't want to hold for that. Are we seeing all in favor?
Was that, was that, was that a motion to move the question?
Yes, please move the question.
Well, Paul, just to clarify, you know, I think each outfit is customized per firefighter.
Right.
So they're not necessarily going to buy twenty if we approve twenty. They're going to prove, they're going to utilize which ones they have to outfit. So if the gear is obsolete, they, they will replace that gear. So every two years, I think, that it gets replaced. So if we have thirteen guys to replace the gear, they want, have that ability to replace those thirteen outfits.
I, I get that, but why wasn't that in the, why is there a discrepancy between that and the RFP? They need, they need up to twenty, but the RFP indicates ten, and that's what the Board of, we're approving what the Board of Public Safety approved, which is ten.
Well, I, I think the vendor wants to know that it's more than ten, to make it worth their while. So they, they just want to go through this effort and make one suit, so they're.
Well, I don't know.
For, for that price.
You're probably right, Stephen, but, you know, it's more complicated. At the end of the day, this is still eighty thousand dollars, and, and somebody should be really specific about what it is, how we're spending this money.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's not, it's not that difficult.
We're not necessarily immediately writing a check for eighty thousand dollars. It's going to be based on how many suits that we buy. So if we, you know, they, they want to sell us a minimum of ten and up to twenty for this price. So it'll be in that range.
Yeah, but, yeah, but as a matter of doing business, you know this, in the private sector, you say, I need fifteen suits, okay? I know I have thirteen guys and I want two extra. I would have bid in for fifteen suits. Board of Safety? What's that? Well, that's not the way.
Yeah, and that is Chief Borden's letter. And I can understand the confusion. I think if we move this for the ten sets this evening, just so that they can certainly put their order in, I'll get clarification from the chief, from the purchasing agent, and if we need to do a quick special meeting before the end of the week to authorize the next ten, we can do that.
All right, per what Heather's saying, I mean, if this, if that's really what the intent is here, that they may need up to twenty, it just, everything just reads wrong, and Public Safety, the board should have clarified it at that level instead of up here. What they're really saying is we need to approve up to eighty, up to twenty sets at four thousand thirty-six. And I'm willing to approve that and be done with this, you know? But going forward, there should be a lot more clarity to what. Public, quite frankly, the Board of Public Safety should have been a lot more specific about what it is they were approving. Otherwise, just come to us directly and we'll fix it and do it right.
It's complicated. It did.
I'm, I'm, I'm willing to do as, as written, Mayor, quite frankly, at this point.
As written?
The original agenda item given, you know, up to twenty sets at four thousand per set, that's fine. The only, the thing that was throwing me off is what Public Safety approved was ten sets, not twenty.
No, they, they approved ten to twenty. They, they're, they were the original.
Forty thousand, that's ten sets.
I know.
Or Public Safety approved forty thousand dollars, that's ten sets.
They didn't, no, they didn't say specifically forty thousand?
No, that was.
Four thousand thirty-six percent is what they approved.
Very confusing.
So I'd like to start over again, if I may.
Please.
Will you, Councilwoman Spino and Councilman Iveyne, withdraw your motions?
Yes, I withdraw my motion.
Yes.
All right, let's try it again. So let's go back to the original, because am I hearing you? Okay, good.
Yeah, and say just up to twenty sets at forty thousand. I'll approve that, up to twenty sets.
I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to execute on behalf of the city to award, execute, administer a contract for firefighter personal protective equipment for the purchase of up to twenty sets of PPE gear at a price of four thousand thirty-six per set to Firematic Supply Company, Inc., pending, excuse me, pursuant to Board of Safety approval. The purchase of the, will be funded from Fire Department capital account as further explained in the purchasing agent letters.
So moved.
Thank you. Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne.
So I'm just curious why we didn't go with the lowest bid. You know, the lowest bid was three thousand nine hundred and thirty-three.
There was a quality write-up and a perspective from Fire Department screening it.
But they usually have to justify it.
Sure enough, they should have, they should have.
I think there is an explanation.
It's the Gear Committee did review the bids, and that document is included in your passage. What are you doing?
I don't know what you're scrolling.
Very fast, speed reading, Evelyn Wood.
And they, they were analyzing the stitching of.
I should never have looked over your screen, that's the issue here.
All right, so the motion is made and seconded, and.
Just move to the floor, please.
I'm going to call this, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, item ten. I will entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Public Works Director and Purchasing Agent to utilize national, regional, state, local competitive bids attached to the Public Works Director's memo dated June ninth, 2025, for the procurement of goods and services for FY twenty-five, twenty-six. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Iveyne, and the floor is open for questions.
I just have one request. I did receive a last-minute request to amend that list to to include, from the Police Department Traffic Division, to include State of Connecticut DAS contract two zero PSX zero one three one for traffic signal parts and equipment. So requesting the list be amended to include that contract.
All right, so if I may, national, regional, state, local bids, would that CR, the CROG, also fall under this?
Yes, it would. I believe the CR CROG is listed.
Okay.
On the second page, under Regional Contracts.
Okay.
The CR CROG, as you know, we are members of, of these purchasing cooperatives. You know, obviously, the NHCOG, we are members of the CR CROG Purchasing Cooperative, as well as the National Purchasing Cooperatives.
I'll move it as amended. Do you sound what you're looking for, Mayor?
Yeah, so the motion was made by Councilwoman Spino and seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Will you amend your motion to include state contract PSX two zero?
Two zero PSX.
Two zero PSX zero one three one.
I amend my motion.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Questions or comments? You better tell Sergeant Baldas he owes you one. All right, I'm going to call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item eleven. I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute, administer a contract in all construction change orders for the Harreton Avenue Reconstruction Project, two zero two five point two, to yield Industries of Torrington, Connecticut in the amount of one million nine hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars, and allow expenditures of up to seventy-five thousand dollars. This project is funded by the City of Torrington Pavement Management Bond Program as further explained in the City Engineers Memo dated January, excuse me, June sixth, 2025.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne, seconded by Councilwoman Spino, and the floor is open for questions.
I have a couple.
Yes.
Hi, how are you? What is the projected start date for this?
Soon as possible.
Okay. And we had talked, and there were some funds received from Eversource because they had dug up the road originally, even though it was in poor condition. Do you know how much we received from Eversource for that?
I do not know what that amount is yet. But it will be, it'll be fair market value for the length and width of the trench repair, permanent trench repair. And I'll be reviewing that to make sure it's, it's fair for the, for the city.
And that's used to offset the total cost?
It will offset the paving cost, yes.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Question, Mayor?
Yes.
When you say a contract in all construction change orders, does this bid of approval of one point nine million, is that, is that, is that, is that a final? Will change orders be included in that one point nine million, or might those change orders be an addition, an additional funding?
So this is a unit price contract, which means like there is, there is like thirty or forty different items that are paid out. And for instance, asphalt by the ton, concrete sidewalk by the square foot, and, and, you know, granite curb by the lineal foot. We estimate those quantities when we put the design together. But when the project is constructed, we measure exactly what is put in the ground. And that could vary plus or minus to that one point nine million.
Are there any limits to that?
So the limit is seventy thousand dollars I'm asking for. There's a limit of seventy-five thousand dollars.
That seventy-five thousand is, is.
In case something.
That is for change orders. That should be, that should be the extent of the change orders.
That's what I am estimating. I can't say for sure, but that's what I'm estimating. I mean, if we, if we, you know, dig and, dig up the road and find, you know, something unusual that we have to take care of, you know, I can't foresee everything, but as, you know, to the best of my ability, I'm estimating that to be.
Can we make the wording and allow for change expenditures? I just want to make this, literally, I, I am, at this point, maybe I've been doing this probably half way too long, but these agenda items, I would like to make it, to make it more clear to the public of what exactly it is we're approving. So what you're saying is you want one point nine million and change upfront, and then allow for change expenditures of up to seventy-five thousand dollars?
If, if we, if there's, yes.
That's what you really want?
Correct.
Or contingency expenses?
Contingency expenses of up to.
So for instance, if, if, if a certain item, if there's certain unforeseen circumstance that.
I get why it's there, I do. But I would like people to realize that's what that seventy.
Because otherwise, otherwise, if I'm locked into the one point nine, and, and.
No, no, I get that, I get that.
Quality goes up, then I'm, my hands are tied.
The wording to be a little bit more transparent, that's all I'm asking for. So once again, Heather, what?
Really, what'd he say?
I believe the previous, some of my previous memos were written to account for quantity fluctuation, I believe was the wording that was in previous requests for other contracts that I don't see in this, in this one.
That would work too, for additional. Quantity expenditures of up to seventy-five, that would.
Yeah.
Either those are fine with me.
Quantity fluctuation should have been in there.
Explain what that additional seventy-five thousand is.
Paul, we usually see, you know, two or three bidders on these projects. I only see one on this. Is this, is it because it's a kind of a short-term bid or a quick bid?
I think it's, it's likely due to the time of year. Everybody's fairly busy now. There's a lot of work going on, and contractors this time of year are probably, are booked up for the rest of the year.
Okay.
And, and Yield is working in the city, and he's very, very happy to do more work for the city to improve, that he can improve the city and make a, make a better name for himself, and he's also very invested in the city, so.
Yeah. Now, when a contractor is bonded for roadworks in the city already, does that help them with these other bids too? Just that they're covered already, or?
I think there's an economy of scale for him as well. He has work ongoing in the city. It's easier for him to mobilize crews from one part of town to another if he needs to versus bringing them in from, you know, somewhere else in the state. So even though he's local and he works all over the, he does work all over the, the state, that economy of scale is certainly makes for better pricing. And as you can see, the price, his price was less than what I estimated. So I think it's, I think it's good value for the, for the city.
Great, thank you.
Okay, all right, I got it. So I'm going to ask for another amended motion. I'm going to read the whole motion and ask for, the motion was made by Councilman Iveyne, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. So the amendment I'm looking for is to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute, and administer a contract and all construction change orders for the Harreton Avenue Reconstruction Project to twenty twenty-five point two, to yield Industries LLC of Torrington, Connecticut in the amount of one million nine hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars, and allow for expenditure of up to seventy-five thousand for quantity fluctuation and contingencies. This project is funded by the City of Torrington Pavement Management Program Bond Fund as further explained in City Engineers Memo dated June sixth, 2025. Will you amend your motion, Councilman Iveyne?
Yes, I approve.
And will you amend your second? All right, so the motion is amended and seconded to include specifically the language regarding the quantity fluctuation. We're good? And contingencies. Good?
Yes.
Great. All right, I'm going to call this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item twelve. I'll entertain a motion by the City Council, acting here in as Water Pollution Control Authority, to approve the following payments from fund number four ninety sanitary sewer capital improvement. This will be date six four two, twenty twenty-five, invoice number zero 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 two four three nine three four to Wright Pierce Engineering in the sum of two thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-eight cents for the Harris Drive Pump Station Design, and invoice date six nine two zero two five, invoice number zero 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 two four four two zero eight, pay a contractor Wright Pierce Engineering. The amount is sixty thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents, and this is for the Winston Road Force Main Tunnel. I heard motion made by Councilwoman Ruette, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions?
When is the tunnel? I'm just kind of excited to experience the tunnel.
When is it going to be built? When will we dig that? Which is part of the trail, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, that's the trail. We're kind of giddy about it.
We, we are in the, we have a seventy-five percent design currently with Wright Pierce for the design of the tunnel and the Force Main pipes that will be required to go inside the tunnel as part of their replacement. And right now, the project is with the DOT for review because the Winston Road is a state road, and they have to review the entire design. So right now, they've given us a, a one-month allowance that they need to review the plans. So once, once they come back with that, we will likely go to bid, provided everything else is in order, and, and they approve the design, then we will put this out to bid as quickly as, as possible. We, recognizing that we are getting late in the year now, however, we can still structure the bid accordingly.
Yeah.
Get to start some work.
Okay, it's kind of exciting having our first tunnel extending that trail, so, yes.
The, the DOT is, is reviewing it. They've got a couple of their projects that they're also reviewing similar tunnels. They are somewhat new for them, so they're proceeding a little bit, a little bit slower, just cautiously to, because, you know, it's going under their road, and they want to make sure that it's, that it meets all their requirements.
Okay, great, thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, I'm going to call it, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, moving on to item thirteen. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Public Works Director and refer to the Planning and Zoning Commission for CGS Section eight dash two four review, the proposed liquidation abandonment. the proposed liquidation abandonment of the City of Torrington properties as shown on the assessor maps as map block lot number 117026025 and map block lot number 117026024. And pending a favorable recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Section 824 Review, authorize the mayor to proceed with the disposal of the above-mentioned properties.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. And the floor is open for discussion.
Do we have more pending parcels, uh, you know, we, we've identified that could be, you know, added to other.
Yeah, we have a whole slew of that. We have, uh, a significant number of parcels that are just small, little slivers of land. For example, on Moore Drive is a parcel that when East School was an active school, we have a, a 22-foot wide parcel of land that's maybe 100 feet in depth that was used as the access point and a trail through the woods for the kids to get to East School. East School is no longer, you know, uh, an active school. The kids don't use that, so we have parcels like that. You know, as previously, we had 401 or 403, Torford West Street, Newfield Springs Road, we have a parcel up there. We do have the kind of all these little pieces, little slivers of land that, um, you know, may not be of use to the city, may not be developable, could not be converted, you know, really an open space, a park. So, you know, early, uh, late last year, we did, uh, an analysis of starting to look at all the city parcels and say, okay, well, which ones, um, really have no value, right? So if we can get them off, that, you know, from, off the city ownership and onto private ownership, albeit their majority are vacant lands, there is an, potentially an incremental, um, tax revenue for those properties. These two properties, the Bader Street property dates back a very, very long time. The Willow Street property was part of it taken from the Bartram Estate when Willow Street and land was conveyed from the power company to the city for the development and the extension of Willow Street. So as you can see on the maps, there's just this little sliver of land, kind of starts out at a point, spreads out, might be 20 feet wide at the, at the end. By disposing of that piece of parcel, so we are responsible for maintaining that section of sidewalk in addition to, um, you know, snow removal for it. And it serves us no purpose. So we've identified this parcel and, and the Bader Street parcel as, um, that really had no value to the city. If we can get them back, um, merge them with other properties, then there, there is that, albeit it may be small and incremental tax value to it, there is that benefit.
How many approximate outstanding properties are?
Oh, hey, I did not anticipate you would ask me how many, but there, there's probably uh, several dozen for sure.
Just, just more out of curiosity, and some are landlocked lots and things.
Yeah, some are landlocked, you know, some are, um, they're just, you know, they're small parcels, you know? For example, I, I don't know if you recall, um, you know, we have the Cook Street property that's been sitting vacant for years. It was originally established. We did kind of have still, you know, have the approval to work with, um, PAC Group in the development of a potential parking lot there. That has been lagging, but, you know, we look at, you know, these properties, can we partner with somebody for a development of a project or, or of a parcel? Like the Cook Street property? Or is it just a piece of property that we really should just liquidate?
Okay, great, thank you, Ray.
Yeah, and I thank you because, you know, there are, that's who we will get calls from, are people who maybe property had been maintained and then not maintained because of.
Yes.
You know, um, the one off of, um, near the high school. Right at the end of that.
At the end of Garden Street?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So I think, you know, the maintenance part of it is an expense. And if you don't maintain it, you know, the, the adjoining property owners aren't happy. So, um, I think, you know, identifying them and, and I, I appreciate you doing this because, and I think the more we do it, to your point, they get on the tax rolls, but it's also makes the neighborhood, I think, much happier.
You know, I, I agree. I mean, and we have parcels that people think are theirs and they're maintaining it and we kind of have to, we have a piece on.
Building sheds on them, putting pools on them?
They put pools on them and then, you know, then we have to enforce, you know, encroachment and have them, you know, have those things removed. And if it's a parcel that, you know, they're willing to purchase, you know, or, you know, we can't find a buyer for it, we abandon it, it gets divvied up, it still gets on the tax rolls. There, there's just so many, there's just, like I said, there's probably several dozen of these properties. You, you would be surprised, I can send you the map of how much property the City of Torrington actually owns.
Little slivers. Yeah, part of road realignment and all that. In addition to those, there are a lot of orphan lots that, uh, that the tax collector has not been able to find the property owner. So, um, that's another project that we've been working on trying to clean up those orphan lots.
Is there a playbook on that? I mean, we're missing owners for like 100 years.
Yeah, I mean, you start looking at paper streets.
Correct.
Where, you know, 100 years ago, there was a, the, this subdivision was built, it wasn't fully centered, there's all these paper streets from the, um, it's the American Land Company, right, Paul? They haven't been around for decades.
50 years.
So we get calls like, oh, well, you know, there's a tree, you know, it's city property and we tell them it's, it's not city property, right? I know, um, Corporation Counsel Magistrati and Paul worked on, you know, a paper street on Lyle Street. Owner had a piece of landlocked property, you know, how, how could he get access? So there, there's just so much of this that, you know, you just don't realize how much. And, you know, if we can continue, you know, and, and I think we, you know, we, we, in our land use committee, we discuss these issues. And, you know, we're looking at, you know, developing a policy, um, to present to the, you know, city, is, you know, what is the process for the city liquidating these parcels?
I don't want to be rude, but can we move the motion?
We can move this motion. It's late.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Ray. I'll call.
Can I amend that motion?
Approved.
Uh, I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 14, I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute, and administer a contract for the Brunswick Site Environmental Assessment Project.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 15, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Building Department report for the month of June 2025. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 16, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicating a list dated June 17th, 2025.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Iveyne, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 17, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize sewer use refunds indicating a list dated June 17th, 2025.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none? I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 18, I will entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
Moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll go to the room. Anything to add this evening, Paul? From engineering? Anything from Public Works, Ray? I know.
I need my, my refuse.
And I know, you've got to get out of here, you're traveling tomorrow, so thank you for staying as late as you did. Anything from, uh, City Clerk's Office? You got nothing? Anything from Corporation Counsel?
No, Mayor, thank you.
All right, and I'm looking at the Zoom room. Uh, I see Mr. Towsley is on the call. Anything from Mr. Towsley?
Nothing for me, thank you. Uh, I, oh, I would like to thank all the council members for coming out and visiting us at the WCA plant.
Yeah.
Fun place to visit.
Impressive, Ed, thank you.
Uh, and I see, uh, William Wallach has unmuted himself. Anything from Economic Development?
Mm-mm, thank you.
Thank you. I think that is, um, Business Department Heads, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by Mayor and Members. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll go to the room first. Anything from Zoom room, I should say? Anything, Councilman Waldron?
Uh, no, nothing for me, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver, is he on still?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, um, Iveyne?
No news. Is there an update on, um, Stop and Shop Plaza? Did, did we disclose that, uh, in previous meetings yet?
So, um, on the Stop and Shop Plaza, what I can share with you, because it is public information and it's accessible on the, um, court's website, the property is, um, there is a, um, petition that has been filed with the court for a foreclosure action against the property owner. I think June 10th was the return date and I don't know, um, if, uh, appearances have been filed yet. But, um, uh, I did ask our, um, Economic Development's, uh, Director to reach out to the, um, petitioner's proposed receiver of the property. That, um, that appointment for receivership has not happened yet. So, but we will be following up on it.
But it's actually good news for us to move that along.
You know, yeah. Yeah, I guess.
I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, yeah. Councilwoman Spino?
Nothing tonight, thank you.[1751.04]